City of Daly City's regular city council meeting on Monday, May 24th, 2021. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20, members of the Daly City Council and staff will be participating in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. City Council meeting livestream at HTS backslash backslash bit.ly backslash Daly City, May 24. At this time, I will ask Leilani to announce kind of how a public comment will be. Can you see the screen, Mayor?
Yeah.
Public comment may be provided for specific agenda items as well as the general public comment period under the public appearances oral communication portion of this meeting. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. During the general public comment period and for each item on the agenda, staff will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Please note that members of the public must wait for staff's prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raise hand function. Also important, staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment and that person will be the last verbal comment for the item. If additional speakers queue up after the last call speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be mailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once per item. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Anyone not adhering to time limits will be muted to allow for all members of the public to provide public comment. Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please? Or actually, maybe do the pledge of the pledge of flag. Thank you very much.
A pledge allegiance to flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I have approval of the minutes for special meeting, May 5th, 2021, and regular meeting of May 10, 2021.
Mayor, did you do roll call already or did I miss that?
Oh, oh, maybe. Thank you very much, Councilmember Benaventura. May we have roll call, please? City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. DG Yvani?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
I think she forgot the most important.
He's having technology problems.
Let's wait on technology problems as stated at this moment so that Ms. City Clerk can finish roll call. Madam City Clerk, can you hear us? Are you online now?
Hello?
Yes.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of May 5th, 2021, and the regular meeting of May 10, 2021, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a first?
Second.
And second. First, say aye.
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 Same.
Thank you very much. Every, we have one abstention and the rest is aye. Thank you very much. So moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there approval for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a first? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a first.
I'd like to pull item from the consent agenda, item number two.
With the exception of item number two as an amendment to that in regards to that since the items being both, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. So, moving on to the agenda, we have item number two, setting time and place of public hearing for a notice of intent to lien real property. Is there a staff member and I think Councilmember Sylvester pulled the item?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Vice Mayor and City Council. The recommended action this evening for item number two is that staff recommends the city council set June 28th, 2021 as the date and time for a public hearing and notice of intent to lien real property. On June 25th, 2012, the city council entered into an agreement, the county of San Mateo to impose lien assessments on real property for unpaid business license rental property taxes. This agreement was approved by resolution number 12-99. Daly City Municipal Code, Chapter 5.16.050 requires that all commercial and residential real property pay a license tax based on the gross rental income collected. Staff recommends that the city council set June 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM as the date and time for a public hearing notice of intent to lien real property. Staff is available to provide any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin, for that information. Have we taken the necessary steps to notify these owners of the various properties?
Thank you for your question. After council sets time and place this evening, then notices will be mailed out for intent to lien real property and the homeowners have approximately one month to then pay for their business license tax and the deadline would be just prior to the June 28th public hearing. And then at the public hearing, that list would be used for a notice of lien and special assessment for rental property.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin, and I understand a lien goes on to the property and we don't know when that lien will come to fruition or when it will be paid, but at least it guarantees that the funds owed will be paid to the City of Daly City. Is it too premature at this time to ask for a rough estimate as to how much the liens, the encumbrance would be?
I don't have, right, I don't have that figure and that's why we send out the notice so that most of that revenue would come in prior to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester and Director Nevin in the clarification for that item. And at this time, is there a motion to adopt item number two?
I'll make a motion that we accept item number two on the consent agenda.
Aye.
We have a first and second. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. DG Yvani?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
And Ms. Manalo, finally.
Thank you very much. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, we are on item number seven with our public hearing. Public hearing for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Local Stormwater Program Regulatory Fee. We have Director Chu and
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to turn this over to Sabeli Cañas, Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item that you have in front of you is a recommendation to adopt a resolution to maintain the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Fees, or MPDES, and use those funds to, you know, continue with some of the requirements listed under the municipal regional permit. And also part of this recommendation is also for, to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with the county, you know, the county of San Mateo for the collections of these fees. This is actual a routine request. We come before you every year with this request and the funds that we collect from, you know, the MPDES fees is to use to, you know, provide some services in the city. We collect approximately $465,000 every year and we use those funds to do some cleaning and inspections at catch basins, also to continue doing some of the maintenance at the full trash capture devices that we have throughout the city and also some of the maintenance that is being, you know, done at the Vista Grande Canal. As I've mentioned before, these requirements, you know, are based on the municipal regional permit which we are about to go into a renewal. MRP 3.0 will be coming out soon. The requirements are going to be a little bit more stringent, but we hope that with the funds that we are collecting that we will be able to continue and provide the services that I've mentioned before. I'm open, you know, to any questions that you might have at this point.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cañas. On that, I see my colleague Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Ms. Cañas. I'm going over your staff report and I'm looking at discussion and it's estimated to be 498,927. And if we approve this, we're only going to bring in 465,000. Any particular reason as to why we should bring in the whole total of 498,927?
Yes, thank you so much for your question. So the fees that we are collecting, they have not been raised in the past 25 years. So it all depends on, you know, as you can see on the staff report, the amounts that we charge to each property depending if it's residential, multifamily and commercial. Unfortunately, we do not, you know, we're not able to recover all the cost. The rest of the, you know, funds, in this case about $30,000 or so, will be coming, coming from the transportation fund to cover the cost. This cost cannot, you know, we have to go to the borders to get approval to increase these fees. So that at this time, we're not able to do that. Perhaps in the near future, we'll be considering that, but at this point, this is all that we can collect.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers Sylvester and Ms. Cañas. Are there any other comments? Thank you. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? I see no hands raised, so at this time, I entertain a motion to approve this. Oh, actually, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're opening the public hearing. Ms. Leilani Ramos, are there any public comments for this item? Members of the public who wish to comment on agenda item number seven, please click on the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute once it is your turn to speak. No hands are raised, Mayor. Thank, thank you very much.
A motion to close the public hearing at this time?
Okay, got a first from Councilmember Sylvester. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, public hearing for this item is not closed. Now I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. DG Yvani?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight. Coastal Development Permit Use Permit UPR-4-21-14989, the 2019 Gabian Wall and Stormwater Maintenance Project at Muscle Rock Landfill at 150 West Line Drive. And we have Mr. Von Luke Hosen presenting to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Manala. Stephen, can you enable screen sharing? Says it's disabled.
Leilani's taking care of that right now.
Okay.
You should be able to make.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request by the City of Daly City to issue itself a coastal development permit for the 2019 Gabian Wall and Stormwater Maintenance Project at Muscle Rock Landfill. Project went to the Planning Commission on May 4th and was forwarded to the city council for action. The council may be aware of where Muscle Rock is. It is, of course, on the coast, on West Line Drive, the northern end of West Line Drive. There's a closed landfill site at this location. It's been closed since, I believe, 1977 and the city regularly conducts maintenance repair work at the site and needs to receive a permit from itself and sometimes the coastal commission itself needs to issue that permit. So the proposed site maintenance improvements at this time are a reconstruction of an existing Gabian wall, widening of the access road below the Gabian wall, relocation of an existing storm drain pipe, excavation of materials from an existing silting basin and general stormwater system maintenance on the site. This is the project site plan. It's oriented so that the bottom of the photo is where the ocean is and this is West Line Drive coming into the site with the Muscle Rock Transfer Station. All of the improvements are in this area adjacent to the, close to the water, but not actually in the water. And there's a Gabian wall and we have some photos of the wall that would be repaired here. So this wall just regularly needs maintenance and that's part of the project. Here's another shot of it looking from the south to the north. And I think this is the road that's going to be widened. Some of the, it's important to remove water off the site so that it doesn't percolate into the ground and this is one of the structures that would be repaired. I think this shows a structure that's buried. The proposal is consistent with the coastal development program. I won't read each one of these things. They're in the staff report and they are included in the council's findings. The project is exempt from CEQA. And again, the planning commission recommended that the city council adopt the findings from the environmental assistant and approve the coastal development permit. If there's any questions, of course, staff is here to answer those, including public works, engineering staff can answer any questions the council may have prior to acting on the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Von Luke Hosen, for your presentation. And at this time, I am seeing if there's any comments or questions from my colleagues. I do not see any hands raised at this time. And so I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Leilani Ramos, is there any public that'd like to speak on this item? Thank you. Members of the public who wish to make a comment on agenda item number eight, please click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. No hands raised, Mayor. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, with no public comment for this item, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To close public hearing at this time?
Thank you very much. I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Public hearing, it's now closed for this item. And now moving on to the adoption of the coastal development permit, use permit. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Okay, I have a first by Councilmember Benaventura. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Dalsmar Bual. And now may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. DG Yvani?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And now moving on to item number nine. Adopting the Comprehensive Operating and Capital Improvement Plan Budget for Fiscal Year 2022. And we have Director Nevin.
Thank you. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Vice Mayor and City Council members. Before you this evening for consideration and adoption is the Operating and Capital Improvement Plan Budget for Fiscal Year 2022. I will be presenting the operating budget this evening and Director Chu will present the Capital Improvement Plan Budget. The current fiscal year 2021 is a rollover budget from fiscal year 2020. The budget being brought to you this evening is a one-year budget for fiscal year 2022. Over the course of the next fiscal year, staff will continue to monitor general fund revenues and the effects of the COVID-19 recession and subsequent recovery. This fall, when work begins on the next budget cycle, staff will consider whether to resume the two-year budget cycle or if it is prudent to continue one-year budgets until we are confident that we have moved beyond the current recessionary impacts. As you will recall from the city council retreat on February 27th, 2021, the following budget priorities were identified and discussed. Restoring Fire Engine 95, approved by this council in March as a Measure Q program. Continuing community investment in COVID-19 recovery. This will be addressed when we discuss the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 at the end of my presentation. Piloting a restorative justice program. This will be in the list of Measure Q programs for council consideration. Looking at prevention and intervention programs. The pilot clinician program was approved by this council in January. Restoring library and recreation programming. This is included in an upcoming Measure Q slide. Investing in succession planning. This is being requested this fiscal year to begin in the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources, as will be shown later. Increasing access to public information and engagement and addressing, excuse me, deferred maintenance and ADA projects. Deferred Maintenance and ADA projects will be highlighted in Director Chu's Capital Improvement Plan Budget presentation immediately following this operating budget presentation. This table lists the general fund revenue sources, starting with property taxes, the largest revenue source for the city. As you can see from the footnote at the bottom of the table, the vehicle license fee shortfall that we have previously discussed has increased by another $2 million and is now almost $5.3 million. This shortfall will hopefully be recouped from a future state budget. The second largest general fund revenue source is sales taxes. And this $21.25 million estimate is made up of general sales taxes as well as Measure Q sales taxes. The split is about $14 million for general fund, general sales taxes and approximately $7 million for Measure Q sales taxes. Next, the other taxes line item includes transient occupancy TOT taxes, cable and garbage franchise fees, utility users taxes and business license taxes. The next revenue source from other agencies includes American Rescue Plan funds, which will be discussed a bit later. And at the end of my presentation, I'll be discussing citywide fee updates and this relates to the charges and fees line item that's next. The current estimate for charges and fees for fiscal year 2022 is just over $5.7 million. Miscellaneous revenues include fixed charges from non-general fund departments paying for services from general fund departments. Lastly, there are fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits and rents and interest. Now we'll look at general fund expenditures by department. These three departments include those with elected officials. The fiscal year 2022 budget for the city clerk's office is decreasing by 15% compared with fiscal year 2021 due to election expenses. Election expenses totaled $150,000 in fiscal year 2021 and are zero for fiscal year 2022, causing the 15% decrease in the expenditure budget. The city treasurer's office budget is increasing by 5% only due to a cost allocation correction being made for fiscal year 2022. The increase does not reflect any salary increases as with the salary as with the salaries for all elected officials. Zero increase. Lastly, this slide shows an eight percent increase for the city council budget. Again, this is not due to salary increases but to budgeting for travel and meetings, mileage, and trainings. Finance staff decreased the travel and meetings budget citywide for fiscal year 2021 as staff was not traveling for meetings or conferences. And this is why the city council budget shows an increase for fiscal year 2022. Next, we will look at the budgets for the following five departments. Each note on the far right has the same sentiment. The increased budget request is due to salary and benefit increases from the last round of bargaining agreements. The budget for the City Attorney's Office is increasing by eight percent with the same increase for the Police Department. The following three departments, the City Manager's Office, Economic and Community Development, and the North County Fire Authority are all increasing by nine percent. As identified in the agenda report, the North County Fire Authority is requesting the addition of a fire safety inspector position.
Director Nevin, thank you for your presentation. I know we're going along the way, and I know you have a very long presentation. But I think some of my colleagues have questions as you go on with your presentation. And I see Councilmember Benaventura. Do you have any questions for Director Nevin in regards to some of the items he's covered already?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Nevin, can you go back maybe two slides over? That one, okay. I noticed in your recitation of some of the taxes, you didn't mention anything about the cannabis tax. Is that because you think that we're not going to be generating any of that in 2022?
I'm looking specifically at the 2022 taxes and where those would would fall. And I believe those would be in the charges and fees section of the of the budget. In terms of finding a specific amount of estimated revenue for that, I don't have that figure in front of me.
Okay, no problem.
But it's in, it would be in charges and fees where other economic and community development fees are charged.
Okay, alright.
The charges and fees also, excuse me, include recreation fees and some other citywide fees as well.
Okay. And then can we go to the 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 last slide you were actually displaying? One more, there you go. I guess I'm curious about the percentage change and how that was come about. Was there a like a mandate to each department to to come at a target level of eight percent or nine percent or 10%? And then, and is that how everybody seems to be sort of in the same ballpark? Or was it just that's the way it ended up happening?
It is actually the way it ended up happening. There was no mandate from finance or the City Manager's Office to come to a certain percentage increase for from twenty-one to twenty-two. Also, the fiscal year 21 current budget has changed some, and you'll see on the next slide how it changed significantly for library and recreation. So some some expenses were budgeted for originally in 2021. But then, as the year progressed with, especially with library rec, with COVID programming not happening, you'll see a lower budget there, and I'll explain it. But in terms of an eight percent versus a nine percent, in general, the note, as the note identifies, it's really a salary and benefit adjustment. And there may be other departments, and we'll look at two on the next slide, that have a slightly lower percentage, like a four and a six percent. And that would be due to some other expenses not being realized in fiscal 22. We may have had a contract that had a significant amount in 21 that's not being carried forward into 22. So that's why that department may have a slightly lower percentage increase. But there was no mandate to departments. We requested, actually a year ago before we did the one year, the rollover budget and the one-year budget now, prior finance staff asked departments for their fiscal 22 number. And then this past year, we asked all departments to come back with an adjusted number for 22 of what they need.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Very helpful. Thank you, Director.
Sure. And I'll just, I'll just end this slide by finishing my note on North County Fire Authority. So in the staff report, it's mentioned that there is a request for an addition of a fire safety inspector position. And this budget request coincides with the decrease of a consultant contract for safety inspection. So it's more bringing the inspections in-house and not relying so much on a on an outside consultant for some safety inspections. On this slide, the first two departments, Finance and Public Works, are increasing by four percent and six percent respectively, also just due to salary and benefit increases from the last round of bargaining agreements. The Human Resources Department is requesting to increase by seventeen percent due to the addition of a succession planning academy, a new full-time position, and salary and benefit increases. As was identified also in the agenda report, it is requested to add a human resources specialist position to the HR budget, utilizing budget savings from the elimination of an hourly position. So that position would be partially funded by that eliminated hourly position. The budget for the Department of Library and Recreation Services is requested to increase by twenty-three percent due to the resumption of program programming coming out of the COVID pandemic. The fiscal year 2021 budget was adjusted down at mid-year from $12.6 million to just over $10.7 million, as you can see in the chart here. The fiscal year 2022 budget request for just over $13.1 million reflects just a small increase over the original budget for fiscal year 2021. And that small increase is similar to the increase for most other city departments. Lastly, the non-departmental budget has requested seventy-three percent increase over fiscal year 21 due to the addition of Measure Q programs. And at this point, my next slide, I'll move right into the Measure Q programs. This slide shows programs that have previously been approved as Measure Q programs as well as programs to be designated as Measure Q programs for council consideration. The first program is the restoration of Fire Engine Ninety-Five, approved by this council as a Measure Q program on March eighth of this year. I included a footnote for this program at the bottom only because staff determined that a small amount of the expenditures for Fire Engine Ninety-Five are fixed charges for two non-general fund funds, namely the Motor Vehicles Fund and the Information Services Fund. And I only mention this because Attachment A to this agenda report did not include these small amounts as revenue for those other funds. So the Motor Vehicle Fund and Attachment A is requested to be increased by $9,600. And the Information Services Fund is requested to be increased by $3,000. The next Measure Q designated program is the Police Body-Worn and Patrol Vehicle Camera Program. This program was approved on May fifth. Another previously approved program that staff recommends be identified as a Measure Q program is the Pilot Clinician Program, otherwise known as the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Pilot Program. As the double asterisk states, potentially expanding this program to three clinicians, for example, fully funded by the city, could total approximately $500,000 in future years. Another program that staff recommends utilizing Measure Q funds is the enhancement to library and recreation program. This figure of $706,582 would add five positions to the general fund. One librarian and two library assistants would be added to restore library hours to the Bay Shore and John Daly branches that were previously cut due to position eliminations. Additionally, Recreation is requesting two Recreation Program Coordinator positions to expand Recreation Program. These two positions were also previously eliminated from the Recreation Budget. The next program requests $500,000 be added to the senior programs budget for expanded services that have yet to be identified. And last, a pilot restorative justice program was proposed at the February council retreat. This program also includes $500,000 for first-year expenditures. Before we conclude the general fund portion of the operating budget, I wanted to show you a short history of revenues, expenditures, and reserves from fiscal year 2017.
And it looks like Benaventura had a question. I want to just kind of.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam City Manager. Can you go back, that's the slide I wanted to see, actually. Can you tell us what, well, I guess I wanted to know, what amount is the federal government going to give us because of the COVID relief package that was passed? And how much of that, if you can tell, I don't know if you have the answer to that, can we allocate to any of these line items? And and I guess more importantly, are there any restrictions to the COVID relief package we're expected to get?
Yes, thank you for your question. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 does have certain restrictions to it. Later, towards the end of my presentation, just before wrapping up my operating budget presentation, I'll outline what the eligible uses of funds are and also the expected amount of funding that the city will receive. The amount has changed over time, and I will give you an update as to the latest information I have as of today. Another item also was updated today in terms of how long we have to spend those federal funds. So I will, I will have three slides on the American Rescue Plan Act.
Great.
Coming up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so going back to this, looking at revenues, expenditures, and reserves in fiscal year 2017, there was a general fund surplus of just over $8.2 million. Reserves were almost $31.5 million, which represented five months of reserves. Fiscal year 2018 saw a $3 million surplus, increasing the reserves to $34.5 million or five months of reserves. Fiscal year 2019 saw a surplus of just over $11.2 million, increasing the reserves to $45.7 million or seven months of reserves. Fiscal year 2020 saw a general fund surplus of $7.5 million with reserves totaling $53.25 million. Staff estimates that this fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, will also result in a surplus of almost $11.9 million, resulting in a reserve level of $65.1 million or eight months of reserves. This anticipated surplus includes roughly $10 million in American Rescue Plan funds that I will discuss further in a moment. The requested budget for fiscal year 2022 anticipates almost $111 million in revenue and asks for spending authority of almost $120.5 million in the general fund. As with prior year budgets, expenditure savings are realized through salary and benefit savings versus what is budgeted. And staff anticipates the same for fiscal year 2022. Moving from the general fund to the enterprise funds, just before I get to the American Rescue Plan Act, we will now take a look at requested expenditures for the department. Oh, yeah.
And so there's Councilmember Benaventura and then Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Nevin, this is a question regarding the reserves. And so I see the the numbers, obviously. And I'm wondering, do you know the the answer to the question of how many times as a city have we just met the minimum of three months? Have we ever gone lower than three months? What's the highest reserve in months that we've ever obtained? Is it that eight eight number that I see in 2021? And is it a best practice, if you will, as far as operating cities, to get us close to the the three-month mark or not? In other words, I understand the necessity of having reserves. And obviously, the higher the the number of months we have, the better we are off. But I have to ask the question, are we wasting that resource and not using it to better operate the city? Versus, and obviously, the counterargument is the more reserves we have, the safer we can all feel. But I think the question needs to be asked is what is our comfort zone level? What's the, I guess, the sweet spot for all that? Thank you, Director Nevin.
Thank you for your question. And actually, I really enjoy the assignment of going back prior to 2017 and looking at the the reserve level and the number of months in reserves. I don't believe that the city has gone below three months of reserves in the past. But it is something that I will go back and and look at. I would agree or think that the eight months anticipated at the end of next year is a is a high in terms of number of months of reserves. That that's the anticipated amount if fiscal year 2021 ends according to this estimate. The other thing that I did mention is that this $11.9 million surplus includes roughly $10 million in American Rescue Plan funds. So that's accounted for there. If if we weren't going to utilize $10 million in American Rescue Plan funding for 2021 and this revenue number of 105 million was closer to 95 million, let's say, then that would mean we would be at eight months of reserves. We'd probably be closer to seven months of reserves. A comfortable reserve amount, I was looking at a presentation from the city of San Mateo, and we could show the same in terms of, you know, revenue loss by month. That's something that I plan to bring to the council when we talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, what our plan will be for the use of those funds. And something that we will look at is, and I'll I'll touch on it towards the end of my presentation, is how much revenue the city has lost due to the COVID pandemic. And the Department of the Treasury is is changing or trying to update their guidance on how cities and counties and special districts can utilize the relief or rescue funds. Some jurisdictions, because they have such a large amount of revenue loss, plan on just trying to replenish their own reserves. But there is significant revenue loss there. Looking out into the future, which I would like to bring to the council again in my next steps, just before I conclude my presentation this evening, I'll talk about bringing to the council, perhaps by the fall, a long-term fiscal sustainability plan, looking out to future pension and OPEV obligations of the city and looking out to, you know, revenue sources and where those look to be tracking at this point. So we we have a model that we've been using probably for the last year or so. And we'll continue using that and I plan to bring that to the council again this fall to really explore long-term fiscal planning. This fiscal year twenty-two budget, as I mentioned, is a, is a request for the authority to spend a cer- a certain amount of money in the general fund. But to be honest, there's, there are always savings related to vacancies throughout the year in most departments. So that will help and hopefully we would not realize a nine point seven million dollar deficit in, in next fiscal year, but that is what is, is budgeted at this point for the general fund. Again, the, the number six, if we were to get to the end of fiscal year twenty-two, would start making me look nervous if the out years start trending down. So that, that's what, what I would start to look at. But if, I, I would agree though in principle that if you were to have reserves just continuing to increase and have well over a year's worth of reserves that really COVID nineteen wouldn't take away those reserves any year. The great recession was hit the city hard, but we could still, you know, continue to do business for a long period of time with a certain level of reserves. So I hope that answers your question, but I will go back in history as well to look at those historical figures. But below three percent, I would guess no. And I would guess eight is a pretty high number for number of months.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Nevin.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Director Nevin, Councilmember Benaventura, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nevin. Could you go back to fund revenue, please? Okay, I was going to ask this question earlier, but I thought I'd wait while I gather all my thoughts. I guess this is something for you and perhaps the city manager to take a look at. There was a comment made earlier by Ms. Kabilis where she made mention that our fees have not increased in a certain number of years. I feel that the city should embark on identifying cost recovery at a minimum for our services that we provide. And subsequently, I, I feel that Daly City is low in the fees that it charges. Is this something that we can look into?
It is exactly something that we are looking into. And again, with my next steps at the end of the presentation, looking at citywide fees with a goal of cost recovery is is on my agenda to bring to you by the fall. I'm interviewing consulting firms at this time. And that would be the goal of cost recovery. And I'll just point out on this chart that you brought us back to, that would appear in charges and fees. This five point seven million dollars, which is roughly five percent of the, of the general fund, but increasing this number from five point seven to seven million to eight million would, you know, would help with a general fund revenue of, of just under a hundred and eleven million, every million dollar counts. So we are actively starting that process now.
Great. And it's my understanding that you're going off based as to the current conditions within Daly City. I know we have retail starting to progress. We got perhaps a couple of hotels down the line. So I didn't see an area where it would be TOT. Would that come under other taxes to which we might garner more?
Yes, that TOT comes in other taxes, the seventeen point four million dollars. And, and I will just note that historically in Daly City, we've had roughly one million dollars in revenue per year in TOT taxes. And with a hotel, obviously we would anticipate more or a hotel or two. But TOT, similar to sales tax, was significantly reduced in the beginning since shelter in place. And, and other cities, for example, I've mentioned the city of San Mateo. I think they had seven million dollars a year in TOT taxes prior to COVID. And this year, a couple hundred thousand perhaps came in. So the most recent fiscal year. You know, the finance director there described it as dropping to zero. So it really just, you know, dropped significantly. We expect TOT, we're budgeting for that to go back to the, to the one million dollars, but with TOT and with other developments, when those actually come in, then the projections moving out will, will follow with the, the revenue projections. But we, we typically don't put them in until those those developments occur.
Thank you, Director Nevin. If you could move on to your slide on Measure Q funding. I like to first start off, and, and the only reason why I'm, well, one of the only reasons, you kind of alluded to it. Approval of this budget is basically giving authority to spend. That's what you said. And I like to go down the list for community wellness. I feel very, very uncomfortable that you have a seventy-six thousand dollar figure there with an asterisk to say that it could expand to half a million. And I, I, I see a problem with that. And I, you know, that's too big of a gap for me. So I, I just wanted to put that point out there. And then I'm hoping to find out more information because I feel uncomfortable in the pilot restorative justice program as to how that figure was derived. That's a concern I have for both those items. So I'm sure later on in the presentation, we would want to, or at least I would want to get more information, especially as to final numbers or how the numbers came about. So thank you for bringing up that slide. If you would go on to the next slide, I think it's our revenue history. Thank you very much. Um, oh, you just had. First of all, I want to make a comment that this is looking very good and what I've seen before. You know, hearing from the finance person, it was always like doom and gloom, but this is looking very good. I want to compliment you on your work on this. However, I want to, and you kind of alluded to it, but this does not include long-term aspects such as CIP, deferred maintenance, pension obligations and OPEV. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. And, and later in the, the CIP budget, you'll see, you will see a five, well, the fiscal year twenty-two and four additional years, just in terms of the planning out for CIP dollars. But yes, on the other side, with general fund obligations, that's true.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Director Nevin. And that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
I, I did have one answer with regarding your Measure Q question on the, on the pilot program for community wellness and crisis response team. So on January twenty-fifth, when, when council approved that item, what that included was for the first year of the pilot program, which is fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, the, a cost to the city of seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which is the equivalent of one half of the cost of the, of the clinician. The clinician would actually be a county of San Mateo employee. The county would provide them with a vehicle, provide them with a cell phone, provide them with all those other expenses. This is one half of the salary and benefits for that one individual. And so what this estimate is in terms of the bullet is really this number at a fully loaded rate where the city pays one hundred percent of the cost of just of the salary and benefits. And again, that would be potential expansion using three clinicians. So it's roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but in future years, it would probably be more like five hundred thousand for the three employees. That's what that number represents.
Oh, thank you, Director Nebbin. I think Ms. Maltby has a response and maybe that'll be helpful for you, Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Councilmember Sylvester, if you have something additionally to ask about the mental health clinician program, go ahead. I was going to talk about the restorative justice program. So if you have, you wanted to back up, then go ahead.
I do. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Nevin, for that clarification. It was my understanding that this was a pilot program. And that Daly City would be responsible to pay part of that while the county is picking up the other part. But I hinge on the word pilot. As of this time, no data has been collected. And I understand that Daly City is a larger population and it may require that we have additional clinicians. But I feel uncomfortable because there is no data at this time. This is just a pilot program. And we have to see how, how it proceeds and whether that would call for the need of additional clinicians. So that's all I have on that subject. And I'm ready to hear additional information on the pilot restorative justice program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Since we're on this topic around the community wellness and crisis response team pilot program, I do want to say that, you know, I was going to say my comments a bit later, but since we're on this, I, I want to say that for me, you know, it is a pilot program and we were going to see kind of the results of it. But given we are a large city, it's important, to me, I think it's, it's staff putting potential expansion shows really their, you know, the, the potential of it expanding. I mean, we are the largest city in San Mateo County. And, and so I, I know that this is a pilot program. But of course, as moving forward, we look at data, but I commend staff for being able to see this as something important in our community. We've heard it, right? There's a lot of mental health support needed in our communities, especially responding to emergency needs. And so for me, you know, it's, you know, for me, I, I commend the staff for having it in here. So thank you very much. Ms. Maltby? Oh, I, uh, Vice Mayor, is, are you on, on the community wellness crisis and response?
Yeah. I also reinforce what the mayor said as well. Although there isn't data, speaking to many clinicians and those that are working on the ground, working on mental health, coming out of this pandemic, a lot of folks have been, a lot of the specialists on the ground have been expressing that mental health is a huge issue, especially coming out of this pandemic. So if we could forecast and see these things coming, I would rather be prepared for it than not have any resources there. If there's issues that will arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
All right. Okay. Councilmember DG Avani, and then I have Councilmember Ray Benaventura on this item, on this particular budget item.
Yes, I was going to just ask you to put in order. May I speak after Ms. Maltby? Thank you.
Sure. I, I, she was going to speak on, she had stated it earlier that it was on the restorative justice program. And so I see people raising their hands on this particular line item on the community wellness and crisis response team pilot program.
Okay, I'd like to, yes, I'd like to make a comment on that. I do think that we have mental health, but we do agree with Mr. Sylvester that going forward with funds that we haven't even started a pilot program. So I would like to see what kind of data we have and what kind of crisis we have, even though I know we, we need the support for the mental health crisis before we reach to the five hundred thousand. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benaventura, is, is it on the crisis and response a community wellness and crisis response pilot program?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also concur in your assessment of the need to support this program and the your commendation of staff to not only, you know, do the research in, in coming up with the figure as well as forward thinking in thinking about how much money this would actually cost and, and looking to the day that we can get more clinicians and, and that they, that a number three was even identified. This is, these kind of programs, as, as mentioned, they're pilot programs. So it's going to take some time to see the success, see the progression and gather the, the relevant data. So it's not going to happen overnight. And I think the, the, the funding is, is going to be needed. And I think that we are better served by looking forward to it and having the allocation of the funding there. So we don't have an excuse to say we didn't have the money. The fact is, what we're doing now is we're being visionaries and, and moving forward and I, I, I don't really think how having clinicians serving the public would be detrimental. I, I see all of it as a positive thing and I, I just don't see how it's not going to benefit us as a community. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura on, on that. And I will now hand it off to City Manager Maltby in response to the pilot restorative justice program.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up for a second. I have to make a comment on the mental health clinician item. And that is that unless I'm misunderstanding, and Mr. Nevin, please chime in. The city staff is not currently asking for the half a million dollars a year. We definitely want the opportunity to pilot the information, get the information, get the data. And should we earmark half a million dollars going forward by adding on mental health clinicians, we would bring this item back to council. Tim Nevin, is that your understanding?
Yes, as listed here in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two request, it is just the seventy-seven, seventy-seven thousand dollars for the cost of the pilot program in fiscal year twenty-two.
And I believe that staff wholeheartedly wants the program to be successful and wanted to just plant that seed to our council and our community that if it is successful, we would be bringing back the expansion. So I apologize for any confusion on that. With regard to restorative justice, so the city staff are in the initial stages of research into restorative justice program. It's important to state that restorative justice is not defined the same by everybody and that it is also not a well-known term by everybody. And it means different things to different people. And so definitely, I believe the council subcommittee, which is made up of Mayor Manalo and Councilmember Benaventura, understand that, you know, coming up with the term restorative justice is common for some people and it's not for others. And so by way of background, at the February retreat on council priorities, staff was tasked with researching and a potential pilot for a restorative justice program. It was identified by the majority of the council as being a priority. And it was, it was a priority that was actually tied with, you know, modernizing equipment for, for our police department, which include body worn cameras. And it was. Um, and it was included, restorative justice was included as a discussion point, um, on our town hall for Measure Q. So, um, a potential restorative justice program would be a, an absolutely brand-new initiative for Daly City. Um, and in order to do it correctly, a significant level of effort is needed to establish this program. Um, in other jurisdictions who have these types of programs, restorative justice programs are, are very well-budgeted with dedicated staffing. Um, and it's also important to note that the final scope of this potential pilot program, should the council move forward with this funding, is not yet determined. Um, a restorative justice program would require intensive coordination between the city attorney's office and the city manager's office. The police department, um, would probably have very minimal, uh, influence other than referring qualified offenders into a re- restorative justice program. So this would not be a program that would be funded by the police department. Um, at a high level, this pilot would be data-driven by crime reports and statistics and would vol- involve a high level of oversight and management of pro- program participants. Um, and, and like I said, said earlier, uh, Daly City right now lacks the in-house staff capacity to implement such a pilot program. Uh, additional staffing would absolutely be essential to ensure integrity of the program, which is why, uh, that figure of $500,000 a year, which, uh, admittedly is, uh, a guess, it's an estimate, uh, would, would really include staffing um, and other administrative cost, program startup costs. Um, so to reiterate, the city staff, we, we have a lot of research to do on this matter for this program design, um, and really, cost estimates will be adjusted based on the final program design. We are planning to do community surveying on this matter. Um, and, you know, just working with the council subcommittee on, you know, as this evolves and as the subcommittee, you know, reaches out in open session with the rest of the council to talk about the, you know, what the goals would be of this program.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, speaking of the pilot restorative justice program, I don't understand why it's under Measure Q, and I do know that at the council retreat on February 27th, 2021, it was brought up, but yet I want the public to know it was never discussed, nor did it ever go out in any of the outreach materials for any of Measure Q. To reiterate that, that means the public never voted on this item. So I don't know how it was related to Measure Q when the measure, uh, ballot language states Daly City's local recovery and relief measure to provide emergency funding that cannot be taken by the state, maintaining the city's long-term financial stability, city services such as supporting local businesses, preventing, addressing homelessness, maintaining paramedic, fire, and 911 emergency response, senior services, preparing for natural disaster and public health emergencies, shall the measure establishing a half-cent sales tax, excuse my language, I mean, my throat is, um, dry, providing approximately $6 million until ended by voters and require independent audits and public oversight be adopted. How is that in relation to Measure Q? And the fact, again, is that we never discussed this. What happened was, so that the people know that we did our retreat, and this, as a matter of fact, was done after Measure Q passed. So that was a little disturbing to me because it was, these people never knew about this program to vote on it. The voters never voted on this. They didn't know anything about it. It did not go in anything in any of the materials at all for outreach or survey. So that is disturbing, and it didn't go to top three. It ended up on number four, by surprise. And then, I, I'm telling you, people in the public, this was never discussed, even up to today, that I have never known any details, nor have any details been revealed from the subcommittee, which started out, so the public knows history, as a social justice issue subcommittee by our mayor. And then it changed names, which I was not brought to the council. It changed names to restorative justice slash social justice issues where, I guess, this was developed or asked for with the money, don't know where the money came from, and then all of a sudden, then you see it at the town halls, and it's a slide that says up to $500,000 to $1 million. But yet, no details, no discussion by council, and again, it does not match the language that the people voted for, and this came up after Measure Q was approved. So I find this very disingenuous to our voters to ask for this amount of money for something, and what about our workers who, our departments have not even been restored at this particular moment? And have we gone through COVID, COVID recovery, rental help for our people? Um, there are so many things. I'm not saying I'm just restorative justice. I'm just saying, how does this match to Measure Q on the ballot? It does not. There's no way to make it fit, or however you guys are trying to do it, it doesn't work. And to say that you're gonna take money, we have to restore what we have in our city to provide the services as Measure Q says, the residence or other property. We have not restored the services for the people at all. This is why they voted for the half-cent sales tax in our Engine 95 and the other things. Already, we put into, like you said, the community wellness, which we do take into consideration of the COVID and the mental health crisis, which I do understand there is a mental health crisis due to COVID on, on many people. But to put this in here as a separate issue, when already our county does this, our county does this. The only blurb I heard from Councilmember Bonaventura on, on this, I would ask him to explain it. But tonight, to explain it, when we're supposed to approve it? When this is the first time we've even had a discussion, which we haven't even had a discussion tonight, and put on here, I find it disingenuous to the voters to, to try to put this and ask for this kind of amount of money when we need this for so many other things, and none of it was in this outreach material or surveys regarding Measure Q. And we cannot do this to the voters of Daly City. They deserve what they asked for, they deserve what they voted for, and at this time, I will have more to say later, that that is not what we signed in our resolution. There is no language in here that refers to that, that all five of us signed in this resolution of this ordinance regarding Measure Q and the language that's appropriate for us. So right now, that's my comments. For anyone making a public comment, please take that in consideration, and to be, we weren't even asked as a council about the subcommittees. We're just told that there is one, and we don't know what occurred other than a very short blurb for the last time. No details given to any council member nor discussion. So that is what I say at this time, and, um, I don't think that we should all use our personal, uh, working professions or what have you to put forth anything um, that, that is taking money from the voters. They voted for Measure Q, they voted for these, they voted for what they're out to the outreach, and that's what I find disingenuous. And, um, tonight, not to ask for the $500,000 to a million dollars. That's what was on that, that slide at the, uh, town hall. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money when we don't even know details, we don't even know what the staff is for, we know nothing. And here we are tonight, looking at this with this amount of money. So, um, for now, that is my public comment for this item, and I will go into the other later this time. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope that the people know that we are here for the Measure Q programs, and that is not a part of Measure Q. And we don't even know what's, what's a part of it. But if you read the mailers, and here's the resolution.
Number D.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so I have Councilmember, uh, Bonaventura.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, let me just start by saying that, um, when we met at our council retreat, the, the topic of a restorative justice program was obviously discussed because we all voted in terms of our priorities as to what would be our top three. And it is misleading to the public to say that restorative justice came as number four. It did not come as number four. It came tied with the last, uh, uh, as the third place, uh, selection. It was not number four. It was tied with the other category. And secondly, the issue of the restorative justice program specifics, um, those specifics, uh, obviously were not yet developed. Um, restorative justice programs require some really intensive, uh, debate, discussion, meetings, proposals, um, talking to the, the people who would be, uh, inherently involved, coming up with a, a plan, uh, a procedure. And so all of that, uh, takes time, and, and it would be, uh, uh, disingenuous to actually put forward a half-baked plan and, and not, um, have it, uh, fully developed for presentation. So, we obviously did talk about restorative justice. I remember specifically, I gave a broad, uh, scope and vision of what I thought restorative justice could look like. Granted, um, the specific details were not, uh, developed nor, um, uh, explicitly laid out because I've, that's not something that I can do on my own. It's something that the staff, it's something that the community um, has to make input on. It's something that all the other partners in this venture, uh, have to contribute to. So, um, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a work in progress. Right now, I've been involved in several, uh, committee, subcommittee meetings, and it's still very early on in terms of the development. There are good things coming out of the meetings, there are, are ideas that are coming out. Uh, but again, it's not fully developed, and it's not, uh, uh, ripe for presentation. And I would think that that's what, uh, the, the city council would want, is to have something that is thoroughly researched, prepared, uh, and, and organized in a way that, uh, people can understand and that people will have input on. And I, and I fully expect our community, uh, will be involved, and we will be discussing it openly with the public. And because I, I think in the end, the restorative justice program will be what Daly City wants it to be. Not one particular person, not one particular group, but it's what the community as a whole would want. A, a, a restorative justice program could be that, to me, will be the definition of our success. It'll be Daly City's program, put together, um, by our staff, by input from the community, and hopefully, it's gonna, it's gonna be a successful, a successful one. Again, this is a pilot restorative justice program. It is gonna cost some money. It's not gonna be free. But like with everything in life, if you wanna, um, do something and make it, uh, uh, work well, you're gonna have to devote resources to it. And so I fully commend the staff for the engagement they have thus far. They've really, um, uh, researched and done the homework and, and asked some very thoughtful questions and, um, talked to the right people. And I mean, I'm, I'm so eager to get this thing going, but I know that my eagerness has to be tempered by, by the progress that we make. So I commend the staff for their diligence and for, uh, uh, taking the time to do this right. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, Ms. Giovanni, I have a comment. Um, I, I, I wanna have some clarification, and you mentioned, uh, the Social Justice Committee. Um, as mayor, you can create, uh, subcommittees, um, and, and that's what I did. You know, in over 110 years of the city of Daly City, it's the first time there's ever been a social justice committee. And, uh, you know, there is a lot of issues in our community. I created the subcommittee for an opportunity to have a focused area in which, if there were any, um, community members that wanted to reach out, there's, there's this committee. And, and the restorative justice program falls under social justice, and so that is where it lies. I wanted to provide that clarification, um, for you. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yep. Thank you for trying to clarify, and Councilmember Bonaventura, what I would ask for you is to give people the details of what you see and what is the need of this, and how does this match in Measure Q? Why are you asking for this money at a Measure Q? How does that match the voters? Because this is after the vote, after the people's vote. That's what I'm asking you. Can you describe the program? Can you describe to the people what, what you're trying to do? Can you give details? Are you trying to, uh, do what is done in a county which is already provided at a county level, which we may not even need here at the city level? That's what I'm trying to say. What is the need? What does it involve? Why, why is it part of Measure Q? Um, I would appreciate those answers. And to the mayor, yes, you did create the Social Justice Subcommittee, but then it turned into Restorative Justice slash, um, which was not announced until the next one. It turned into something, but no details were ever given on a council report to where now I see it as Measure Q. So understandably, um, I don't think the people, uh, voted for this particular issue. That's my, that's what I'm saying. Why is it on this, oh, Measure Q? And why is it now, if it's not even being developed, why are you asking for money from Measure Q, which the people did not vote for this? I can guarantee you the people did not vote for this. This brought, was brought up after the fact, after the fact, after people voted. That's what I'm saying. So I find that very, um, disturbing and would appreciate the fact of letting people know what it is, and that's a lot of money. That is a lot of money when people are hurting during COVID. And why the need? Ninety-eight percent of the, um, where's the data? Ninety-eight percent of the crimes committed are people from out, not in our city. So I'm not understanding where this is going, why this is this. When we do, we have low staffing, has been cut since 2008 in many departments. People have been working hard during COVID. Um, resources being needed for rent relief, and I know we are providing money, but it's not enough for our businesses, it's not enough for our local economy, and we need to use that, and we need to honor the people for Measure Q. This is not part of Measure Q. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember Bonaventura would appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Well, I can say, Madam Mayor, if, if Councilmember Chidi Giovanni doesn't understand the need for a restorative justice program, I really can't really say much. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, uh, Councilmember, uh, Bonaventura. Um, at this, uh, point, uh, I think, uh, let's move on to our presentations. Um, I know that we have more on the docket in regards to this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Um, we finished this slide related to general fund revenues and expenditures, looking at reserves as well. And now we'll move from the general fund to the enterprise funds, and we'll take a look at the requested expenditures for the Department of Water and Waste Water Resources. On the water side, the, there is a requested increase of 4% for fiscal year 2022. For sanitation, a requested increase of 9%. And an overall departmental increase of of seven percent for the enterprise. Succession planning was discussed uh at the February twenty-seventh City Council Retreat. At the, in the beginning phases of succession planning is being addressed in the enterprise funds at the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. To better prepare for future retirements, the following positions have been requested. An Assistant Director of Water and Wastewater Resources, an Assistant Chief of Operations, a GIS Analyst to work with the city's GIS Coordinator, and an Administrative Assistant Preposition, which is requested for just one half of the next fiscal year. Before I wrap up this discussion of the operating budget and hand it off to Director Chu to present the Capital Improvement Plan Budget, I'd like to provide an update regarding the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. Information is being updated daily from the Department of the Treasury and this is what staff knows today. The current estimate of federal funds to be received by the city is twenty-five point three million dollars. The Treasury Department will provide cities and counties two payments, one half to be dispensed soon and the remaining one half to be dispensed no sooner than twelve months later. Uh this last piece of information was received just today. We originally had until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four to expend the funds uh with unexpended funds to be returned to the federal government. But now, uh we've learned that we only need the funds to be obligated by the end of calendar year two thousand twenty-four and expended by the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-six. Eligible uses of these federal funds are entities using funds to replace lost revenue due to the pandemic, expenditures for water, sewer or broadband infrastructure, and assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits. Related to the first eligible uses, staff has begun approximating revenue losses due to the global pandemic. We calculate that the city lost just over eleven million dollars in calendar year two thousand and twenty and will lose another eleven point five million dollars this calendar year. Also, on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, this council approved the six-month deferral of a planned water rate increase from July first, two thousand twenty to January first, two thousand twenty-one due to COVID. This savings to the ratepayers resulted in one point one million dollars of revenue loss for the water firm. Uh staff will continue to monitor revenue losses due to pandemic um next calendar year in two thousand and twenty-two. I want to discuss next steps um regarding the operating budget, uh as I mentioned uh previously. But by late summer, staff will present recommendations to the city council for uses of the American Rescue Plan Funds. They should be received by that point. And later this fall, after more analysis of sales taxes and other revenue sources affected by the pandemic, staff will recommend a, make a recommendation for returning to a two-year budget cycle or continuing with one-year budget. And lastly, also in the fall, staff will look to bring to the council a long-term fiscal sustainability plan, including potential options for addressing pension and OPEP obligations and a recommendation for updated citywide fees for the goal of addressing cost recovery. And this concludes my presentation of the operating budget. And before I hand things over to Director Chu for his presentation of the CIP budget, uh I'll pause here for any other questions uh from the council regarding the operating budget.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your uh comprehensive um presentation, Director Nevin. Um you know, we, when looking at your budget overview, it does look like we aren't in such a dire situation as after a pandemic we would be in, right? So I think that's something that is important to note and for the public to see. Uh uh it's also, you know, really wonderful to see that we're gonna be able to increase our youth services, senior services. You know, at twenty-four percent, uh you know, seeing that rise of twenty-four percent in services, having the Bay Shore Library reinstated with hours. And we know that many of our community's uh members wanted to see this come into fruition. You know, I I'm ecstatic and I know that we approved this prior, that uh Engine ninety-five is reinstated. We know that so many community members wanted to see this um happen. And to see this in this budget cycle is um really promising and, you know, for the safety of our community. Uh we know uh that we've really seen a need and it's so important to have this, these library and recreation programs for our youth and young people and especially for our older adults. You know, um especially during the pandemic, we know that there has been a lot of isolation for our uh older adult population who heavily rely on the interaction at Dodger Senior Center. Um and to see the expansion of senior programs is is really important to our community. I know that in our 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 population, our older adult population is increasing in Daly City. Um and this shows, you know, uh once again, the insight uh of staffing and and looking into that. You know, we talked about the Crisis Wellness and uh Cr- uh Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Pilot Program. For me, you know, it's not allocated here, but to have that foresight, it, you know, we want it to succeed and we need that mental health support. Um and also, along with the restorative justice program. I mean, this is something that is innovative and new and something that will be researched thoroughly, as mentioned. And so some of the uh questions I have is, um you know, if uh Ms. Maltby could clarify, um you know, where would, you know, potentially uh the restorative justice program, where would it be housed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the question. Um and as stated earlier, this is very much in the infancy stages as far as program development. But uh it looks at initial thought that it would either be housed in partnership with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office or in one of those departments exclusively.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Maltby. Uh, Mr. Nevin, I know you mentioned that in September, it would really be kind of the timeframe in which we would have an accurate um uh uh number or accurate number in regards to the American Rescue uh dollars that that remain. Is is that correct? You said fall, would it be September?
Uh, excuse me, so for the um in terms of next step, I would like to come to the council uh later, probably in the summertime, to discuss a plan for the funds. Knowing that we will receive, um as I mentioned here, we'll receive approximately twelve point six five million dollars this, towards the end of this fiscal year and the next month, I would think. And then the remaining uh twelve point six five million to be received at the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. So um getting together, at least by this summer, to start talking about a plan for uh how the city would would utilize those funds um is what I'm looking for.
Okay, great. And you know, I definitely, and I'm in concurrence, I I do believe that we need to have a a study session in the summer uh um you know, in regards to reaching out to our residents, also our small business community. Um and you know, a really creating a comprehensive recovery plan in the remainder of dollars. I understand that we need to uh make ourselves whole with what was the deficit um from the pandemic. But with the dollars that are remaining, um I, you know, I know it could be towards assisting our community in needs around rent assistance, small business support. But I'd always also love to have the opportunity to hear from our residents directly. So um you know, I I'd like to schedule a a study session in the summertime and host a Daly City Recovery Study Session. Because I think it's so important for us to have have that and have staff um hear from our community members and also be able to uh implement a a plan uh down the, down the pipeline. Uh but I appreciate all your work on this and I know that you're going to be able to provide the numbers on kind of where are the actual numbers are and then proceed from there. But um having us have a town hall in the summer to reach out our community i- is something that I think is very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And i- if there are no other questions on the operating budget, I'll stop sharing and allow um Director Chu to share the Capital Improvement Plan Budget.
Thank you, Director Nevin.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Um let me try to show my screen here. Okay, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes, we we see it, Director Chu.
Okay, great. Um
We see it, um but it's, uh there we go. It's now on a uh
Okay, yeah, here we go. Okay, great. Um good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Um it's it's my great honor to uh present this capital improvement program. Um the capital improvement program is one of the most exciting aspects of my job. Um it gives us the opportunity to really dream big and look at the long-term needs uh of the city over a ten-year horizon. The capital improvement program itself is a uh living document and it changes based on um the priorities and needs. Um from that capital improvement program, uh we develop a uh capital budget which we present to you for approval. And uh for tonight, we are presenting uh for your approval, the fiscal year uh twenty twenty-one slash twenty-two uh fiscal year budget. It's a one-year budget um based on the um situation we're in and the economy and some of the uncertainties. Um the capital improvement program itself identifies the proposed projects and it um talks about the descriptions of each project, the cost, uh fund sources, and then also the schedule for implementation. Uh as Tim mentioned previously, um there's a, this is a snapshot of just the five-year CIP forecast. Um the, when we put the program together, it's actually a ten-year outlook. Um but uh what's on your screen is a five-year uh outlook. Um the first um fiscal year column, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two is in bold and that's the request for tonight. The total here is about a little bit over twenty-eight million dollars. And you can see the breakdown by the various funds in terms of transportation, um about eight point eight million dollars. Uh the water fund, a little bit less than three point five million dollars. A sanitation fund, uh about seven point four million dollars. Civic Center Fund, a little bit over half a million. A General CIP Fund, about three point seven million. Um we also have grants, that's about half a million. Uh in terms of fees that we collect, um we're proposing to use about one point six million dollars of that. Uh and then finally, the public facilities fees, proposing a requested amount of about one point nine million dollars. Um one thing that's a little different from capital is that uh for CIP budgets, um it's not uncommon that um it it varies from year to year. You may have a particular year where you're spending a couple of hundred thousand in design. But once the the design is complete, you may be spending several million dollars the the next year uh to actually construct the project. So, uh this is a breakdown of the various funding sources uh and a little bit of description uh on the various funding sources. So, uh we do get uh Measure A. Uh this is a county half-cent sales tax and it's primarily uh used for transportation and road maintenance. The amount that's requested is a little bit under two point five million dollars. Also, Measure M is also a a county uh sales, uh it's a county measure. Um this is the uh ten-dollar vehicle registration fee. Um and it's intended uses for traffic congestion and water pollution. Uh the request out of that fund is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh the more recent county measure is Measure W. Uh I think many of you remember, um this is a measure that was passed recently. It's also a half-cent sales tax uh and its uses for transportation and road maintenance. Uh the request for this coming year is one point three million dollars. SB one, uh I think many of you are also aware of SB one. Um this is a state transportation fund and its uses for road maintenance and rehabilitation. Uh the request is um a little bit less than four point four million dollars for this coming fiscal year. The next two are the Enterprise Fund, a Water Fund and Sanitation Fund. Um obviously, Water Fund is is funded with water rates um and the amount that's requested is a little bit less than three point five million dollars. Um and similarly for sanitation, uh which is also Enterprise Fund, um the amount requested is a little bit less than seven point five million dollars. My General CIP Fund, um this is for, it can be used for any type of project. Um and it's basically the general fund transfers in for capital projects. Uh the amount that's requested there is a little bit less than four point three million dollars uh for this coming fiscal year. Also, as as council members know, um we go after grant money uh as as much as we can. Uh and so, um what's being proposed is in regards to um allocating uh for the upcoming fiscal year, a little bit more than half a million dollars of grant funds. Uh solid waste franchise fees, uh this is the garbage rates. Uh a portion of the garba- garbage rates that we collect is set aside for the muscle rack landfill uh work that's needed in in order to maintain that landfill uh and to satisfy the regulatory requirements from the other agencies. And so for this coming fiscal year, the amount that's requested is a little bit over one point three million dollars. The last two, uh public facilities fee and parkland dedication fees, these are develop developer fees. Uh when development um occurs in the city, we collect some fees. And so for public facilities fee, uh the request for the coming fiscal year is a little bit more than one point nine million dollars. Uh and then for parkland dedication fee, the request is a little bit under three hundred thousand dollars. And again, you can see the total uh for these various fund requests amount to a little bit over twenty-eight million dollars as you saw previously. Um this is a breakdown uh by categories and it just um goes over the number of projects uh based on each category. So for um this upcoming fiscal year, um traffic and transportation-type projects, uh there's twenty projects that's being proposed. For water projects, there's eleven. Uh sanitation, there's seventeen projects that's being proposed. Uh for stormwater-related projects, there's two projects. And then, uh lastly, for facilities-type projects, there's twenty-two of those. Um the amount request broken up by each category is shown uh on this slide. Uh again, uh totaling a little bit over twenty-eight million dollars. So there's a total of seventy-two projects that is being requested for this coming fiscal year. Um this is just a breakdown of the specific projects. Um so this is the traffic and tran- transportation projects. Um there's a list of um all the projects proposed for the upcoming fiscal year and and their amounts. Um there's several ADA sidewalk improvement-type projects. Uh we have some traffic signal um upgrade projects and and installation projects. Um we've got some um street skate projects in terms of street beautification. Uh we also have some um projects in regards to uh trying to start um making a dent in terms of our series circuit streetlights. Uh and then also some road maintenance, slurry seal type projects. This is also just um a continuation of the traffic and transportation-type projects. Uh again, a street resurfacing-type projects and then our traffic signal improvements. And then lastly, uh council members, you are aware of Vision Zero. Um we put aside some money in there for Vision Zero improvements. Uh total is about um a little bit under nine and a half million dollars. Uh for water projects, uh you can see all the water projects listed here. They're listed in in terms of the various types of projects. Uh many of them are are water They're listed in terms of the various types of projects. Many of them are water main improvements. Some of the equipment that they need to upgrade and some of the well rehabilitation. The total here is a little bit under $4.5 million requested. Sanitation projects, also very similar to water projects, a lot of water main improvements. Some of the plant upgrades and their treatment facility, treatment equipment. Total here of a little bit less than $7.5 million. Flowwater projects, we have two. One is just cleaning maintenance for the home drain line and then also some funding here to do a storm drain master plan. Now, we get into the facilities project. And as Tim mentioned, at the council retreat, there was some desire to make some improvements in regards to ADA needs, also in terms of deferred maintenance. And Councilmember Sylvester, you kind of alluded to some of these things as well. And so, the projects that are listed, shown in red, these are ADA-type projects and we do have three of them here. In terms of some improvements at Chiramani and then also various facilities making some improvements in regards to, starting with kind of the low-hanging fruit, the easier types of improvements first. The other improvements that's shown highlighted in yellow, these are deferred maintenance projects. As many of the council member knows, the city has over 30 public facilities. And they're all very old and there's a great need in regards to deferred maintenance. And so, there's a lot of catch-up that's needed. So, what's shown highlighted in yellow are the projects that involve some deferred maintenance in terms of making improvements there. Some of the other projects that are neither ADA or deferred maintenance involve some improvements for fire stations in regards to some of their upgrades and needs in terms of training center and sleeping quarters. And then there's also some improvements to Civic Center North in terms of potentially creating some space for HR, for human resources. And then also, this is just some additional facilities-type projects at some of our park facilities. Also, you can see the deferred maintenance in terms of the highlighted projects listed in yellow. You can also see Muscle Rock improvements. I mentioned solid waste franchise fees were required to maintain Muscle Rock and satisfy the outside regulatory agency requirements. Also, you'll see here is the Margate Park Improvement. This is just getting the process started in regards to design. And then additional funding construction would come in the following years. So, that concludes my presentation in regards to the capital improvement program budget. I would like to say that all the department heads are available to answer any specific questions regarding specific projects that council may have. So, thank you very much for your time and happy to answer any questions in regards to the budget itself in general.
Thank you, Director Chu, for your presentation on the capital improvements plan. I do see two hands up, Councilmember Buena Ventura and right after, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Chu, maybe I missed it, but can you address any in all capital improvements for our Dodger Center with respect to any of the buildings there? And also, I'm interested in what your budget or your thoughts are on whether or not we are going to seek any improvements or rehabilitation of the Westlake School of Performing Arts location.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. So, in regards to the Dodger Senior Center, we don't have any major CIP project proposed for this coming fiscal year. As many of you may know, we recently wrapped up a lot of work at Dodger Senior Center in regards to roofing work. We've also did a lot of painting work. There is some proposed work in regards to the courts out there in that, in the Westlake Park area. But as far as the Dodger Senior Center itself, with the exception of maybe some ADA improvements, there isn't a major project coming for this coming fiscal year. In future years, yes, but not for this coming fiscal year.
And also, just so that the Pacheli Gym and all the other surrounding buildings or rooms.
Yeah, so in addition, when I mentioned the roofing project that was done, Pacheli Gym was also done as well. And also, in addition to the painting project, that also covered that as well. And so, again, with the exception of maybe some ADA-type improvements signage, that doesn't rise to the capital improvement level. That, we will be doing some of those things.
And then, so the Westlake School?
Yeah, for the Westlake School of Performing Arts, for this coming fiscal year, again, that's similar to similar to the Dodger Senior Center, we don't have significant projects at the School of Performing Arts at this time. In the future, definitely, there will be in regards to some of the the needs in regards to the facility and improvements. There is some upcoming work needed for the play structure out there. I think that may be that probably doesn't rise to the level of a CIP level. So, there is some work that's qualified under the operating budget that covers some of those improvements.
Thank you, Director Chu.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura and Director Chu, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you very much. Director Chu, just a couple of questions. I promise not to make this difficult. Do we have a reserve available in the Enterprise Fund?
So, Councilmember Sylvester, in terms of reserve for the Enterprise Fund, I'll defer that to Director Piccolati. But just to be clear, in terms of the capital budget, again, it's not the same as operating budget. Typically, for the capital budget, you know, in terms of reserve, typically, you want to spend the capital budget as quickly as you can and as much as you can. Because often, these are kind of one-time projects. And again, in terms of a reserve, typically, that's just to maintain operations of city hall and city business, which is slightly different than capital work. But yeah, in terms of the Enterprise Fund, I'll defer to Director Piccolati.
Okay, I look forward to hearing. The reason why I asked that question because we need to consider capital improvement and deferred maintenance, which you've highlighted the short-term aspects as to what should be done now. I'm also concerned as what may come up in the future. So, the reason why I asked about the Enterprise Fund, and I'm sure Mr. Piccolati will be able to answer that when it's his turn, is, you know, we're asking for money from the general fund. But if there's anything in the Enterprise Fund that can be used to offset, you know, some of the requests, and you know, it has to be on the up and up, I'd be interested in hearing it. I hate to see a reserve just keep rising and rising where, you know, I would like to see funds offset some of the capital improvement. Now, I'm hearing it's for operational costs. So, I don't know. So, you know, you have to enlighten me and I hope the both of you can. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Sylvester, thank you very much. So, just to be clear, in terms of facility needs that have to do with facilities for water and facilities for sewer, those are being paid for out of the Enterprise Fund. And so, the other facilities that are non-water facilities or sanitation facilities, those would need to come out of the general fund or some other funds, not Enterprise Fund. And so, the need is so great that our desire is to spend it as quickly as possible because oftentimes, the deferred maintenance will become much larger if we wait. So, we want to get those as soon as we can to minimize the problem of it getting bigger.
And Councilmember Sylvester, if I may, regarding the Water Fund and the Sanitation Fund, I don't have the particular reserve amounts in front of me right now. But Director Chu is correct. So, the operating budget and the revenue that comes in for both the Water Fund and the Sanitation Fund, part of that is used for a fairly aggressive CIP program out of both Enterprise Funds that address a lot of short and long-term needs in both systems. And I think that that gives me a good idea. And next time I present, I'll include the Enterprise Fund reserve level so we can take a look at that.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Sylvester, thank you so much. And also for that clarification on this. Director Chu, do you have a raised hand? Councilmember Di Giovanni?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Chu, thank you for the great presentation. I know that this is something that's been ongoing for years, but, and I know it's very costly. But you know, the SROs for the streetlight is been going on, I don't know, 20, 30 years. Is there any plan, which I know we don't have the funds at this time, for any of that? And is that considered under our CIP? Or where is that put at?
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Yes, you're absolutely correct in terms of our series circuit streetlight system, our ROs. That is a major issue. With that being said, we have taken the initiative to start working on that. And so, you could see here, we are proposing to budget some money for conversion of some ROs for the coming year in terms of design. These are design costs. The actual construction cost is very expensive. It'll take a long time to really finish it all, but it's better to start somewhere. And so, yes, we are proposing to do two projects for this coming fiscal year.
That's fabulous because we know that's a big safety issue and appreciate all of you always going out when people, you know, when they call and our seniors are in the dark. And so, I appreciate that. And at least this is some good news for them as well. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Thank you, Mr. Nevin.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni and Director Chu.
To the chair.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to answer Councilmember Sylvester's question. The Enterprise Funds are specified and restricted to those activities. The goal is six months, similar to the general fund. And currently, the Water Fund is about 5.5, projected to be about 5.5 million. And that is a rebound. As you may recall, we adjusted the rates in the last few years to get that reserve fund healthy enough to continue the capital and the activities that need to be done on behalf of the ratepayers. On the sanitation side, we're at about 16 million with a target of 18 million. So, that's where we sit right now, just to answer that question moving forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Piccolati, for that clarification. Thank you very much. I do have a question in regards to the transportation piece. How much of the allocation is towards purchasing new vehicles? And is it, is any of them electric vehicles? Or is there a plan in the future to purchase electric vehicles so that long-term savings can occur? You know, with utilizing electric versus gas?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor Manalo. The electrification of vehicles and purchasing of vehicles just in general, that's, we address that under the operating budget. And so, it's not part of the capital program. But to answer your question, we are working closely with City Manager's Office and Finance in regards to trying to secure some funding to put in some electric vehicle infrastructure in terms of charging facilities at our courtyard in anticipation for getting electric vehicles. We know it's just a matter of time. Funding is constrained. But the first thing we need is infrastructure. And so, that's kind of where we're working on. At the same time, looking out for any potential, you know, grant opportunity as well to help with that endeavor. So.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Chu. And then looking at creating infrastructure and when we do get electrical, electric vehicles down the pipeline. And I do appreciate that, you know, it's really important for us to move in that direction and for looking out for grants so that we can have, you know, clean vehicles and also be able to save in the long term. So, thank you very much. I see no other hands raised from my colleagues at this point. If there are no other comments from my colleagues, I will now hand it over to Ms. Leilani Ramos to see if there's any public comment on item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to let the public know, we have received nine written comments which were forwarded to the City Council. Now, for any members of the public joining us on Zoom that would like to make a comment on agenda item number nine, please click on the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute once it is your turn to speak. Staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance with the council's rules of decorum will be muted. So, I'm going to do a last call for raise of hands. It looks like we have eight raised hands, the last speaker being Jay Jansen. The first speaker I'll call is Christine Fuller.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and staff. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I've been having computer issues.
We can hear you.
So, I do have a very, I understand our JP is being under development. I do have a couple of questions on how it could be voted upon this evening to move forward with the $500,000 budget up to a mill. I think that's what the March 15th Town Hall, I saw it then. You know, I do have a question with it being long-term. You know, I have a lot of questions with it, with, you know, offenders being, you know, repeat offenders, recidivism. I have an issue with confidentiality in the post-traumatic stress disorder. A lot of victims don't want to come forth face-to-face with their perpetrators. You know, I have some questions and I understand, Mr. Buena Ventura, it is under development. I totally respect that. But I feel and strongly believe the public needs a lot more transparency on this. But I feel and strongly believe the public needs a lot more transparency on this. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Mayor, you guys are voting to approve this fiscal budget to move forward. So I'm assuming that will stipulate the 500,000 that's been proposed. When, Mr. Brendan Ventura, you did say that you've been in talks with people. I, as a citizen, I don't know who's talking to who or, you know, what this falls under. I know, Madam Mayor, you mentioned that, you know, RJP is social justice. I think we're all hearing a lot of terminology these days that frankly go back in history, that are being, you know, rehashed. And I think just a lot more education and transparency is warranted.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Your time has expired. If I could ask for you to wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you. I have no other comment. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And next we have Joshua Reese.
Hi, my name is Joshua Reese. I'm an ASME Union Steward and Librarian II, Collection Services Manager with the Daily City Public Library. I would like to thank the city council for prioritizing the restoration of some of the past positions cut in the Library and Recreation Services Department. I have been with the Daily City Public Library for nineteen and a half years and have seen many changes over the years, most guided by reducing the budget, which meant not only spending less on books and materials, including eBooks and online resources for children and adults, but targeted specifically at reducing staffing by not filling vacancies and continued reductions to available public hours at each of the four libraries as a result. It is wonderful to see these three library positions restored, which will enable some of the lost 70-plus public hours per week restored. This librarian and the two library assistant positions are crucial to bring the Bay Shore Library back from the pre-COVID schedule of two days a week and the John Daly Library back from the pre-COVID schedule of three days a week. That can't happen without those positions. Please keep in mind, the library's lost seven positions since 2008. So we continue to have a long way to go before the library's back to what it was in 2008. Thank you for funding these positions, and I'm hoping that more positions and programs can come back over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Selena Tirana.
Hi, I'm Selena. I was speaking to you guys a couple of months ago for the Cultivating Racial Equity and Inclusion Program we're doing at the library. So I wanted to thank you all, both as a staff member and as a resident, for the potential additions of positions to the library department. Growing up, my house has always been full of relatives. And at one point, when I was in high school, there were nine of us living in my house, and I couldn't study at home. So I went to the John Daly Library, because it's in my neighborhood. I'd go there on Wednesday nights, because it was the one night that they were open late. And then I'd go to Barnes &amp; Noble in Colma for the rest of the week. And at one point, it just started making more sense to go to Barnes &amp; Noble, because they had more consistent hours. I don't think my housing situation is uncommon here, and I think we need the libraries to be open to better serve our residents, especially our students who might need the space. When I was a kid, the John Daly Library was open six days a week, and so was Bay Shore. So thanks for getting us back in that direction. Getting all our libraries open five days a week is a great start to creating more equitable services. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Marguerite Machen.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Greetings, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Marguerite Machen, and I am a longtime resident and homeowner here in Daly City, Westmore, class of 1989. And tonight, I'm here as a Commissioner on the county's commission on the status of women. On behalf of the commission, we would like to thank the city of Daly City for acknowledging that mental health and freedom from substance abuse issues is fundamental to the overall health and well-being for all members of our community, as was mentioned on April 26, when it was proclaimed that May is Mental Health Month. As a Commissioner on the status of women, I want to raise awareness of the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on women. One example being, although women comprise 39% of the workforce, they were 60% of those who lost their jobs. To our women council members and all the women in the audience this evening, please know that during these unprecedented times come stress, sadness, and anxiety, you are not alone. Even with my own experiences this past year, it's been very, very challenging. Seek out professional help. It's not a sign of weakness, it's a sign of strength. I encourage everyone to still access the Samhain County Mental Health Month website. There are still 10 more virtual events this month that are all free. And the website is smchhealth.org. Once again, smchhealth.org, and you can see these 10 virtual events. Thank you again for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to have the public be advised that any comment taken on this agenda item is specific to the subject matter. Your comment is probably appropriate for general public comment, but thank you for your comments this evening.
Next, we have Shannon Benner Boxer.
Hi. I'm Shannon Benner Boxer. I work at the Westlake Branch for Daly City Public Library. And I wanted to thank the council too for restoring some of the positions that we've lost over the years. I'm a recent addition, but I absolutely love the library. I love the staff there. I love the patrons in the community. And so many times, I've had patrons come in and who live near John Daly, but they come into Westlake, because John Daly isn't open. Occasionally, I've got John Daly, and I'll have people come in, and they're surprised that we're open. And they say, I never remember what hours you're open, because you're never open. So I'm really excited at the possibility that we'll be able to have more hours for John Daly and Bay Shore. That's a really exciting thing for the community. I'd like to add, you heard from my coworker, Selena, about growing up in Daly City. I grew up in San Francisco, and I lived in several places, several neighborhoods, always had a library available, so many hours. And when I first heard Selena's story, I was stunned and saddened. And so again, I'd like to thank you, because I'm really excited at the prospect of seeing more hours for the underserved branches. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Joanna Rosales.
Hello, good evening, city council and staff. My name is Joanna Rosales, and I've been a lifelong Daly City resident. I urge city council to have a clear and transparent community input process for the fiscal budgeting procedure. I ask that you, one, prioritize community centers, libraries, youth, and senior services, addressing homelessness, mental health services, and creating more open spaces. These are the programs and services that will help the community long-term and will create an inclusive and equitable city. I did see in Mr. Nevins' presentation that there is priority in funding for community wellness, library and recreation programs, senior programs, and the pilot restorative justice program, which is a start, so thank you for that. Number two, I ask that you host annual listening sessions where community members can voice their priorities for the budget while in advance of the budget meetings, so that city council can take the community's concerns into account. Neighboring cities like Pacifica and Half Moon Bay have listening sessions separate from city council meetings that dedicate a space for community members to speak on their priorities for the city budget. These sessions should be advertised on social media to organizations in the community and to local businesses in a timely manner to ensure community members are aware. They should also encourage and prioritize the participation of youth, seniors, and low-income, Black, Indigenous, and people of color in Daly City. And lastly, allocate funds in the budget towards mandatory anti-racist trainings for all city officials. As public servants, it's crucial to think about your own professional development and how your own biases affect your decision-making. These trainings will help in addressing, preventing, and interrupting discrimination and bias in the workplace. And I'm sure you know, but just as a reminder, your workplace is not like any other workplace, and your decisions affect thousands of people. So I hope to see these recommendations reflected in the budget and in your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, or Lalo, and I live here in Daly City. It's been disappointing to hear that more resources have been given to the police department, given the recent historical incidents and unhealthy presence that the Daly City Police Department has here. And has been distressed, created with your residents, that center social justice and equity in our values. And your recent actions, along with this budget process, only continues to create the same sentiment. With that, I urge the city council to revisit their commitment in authentic community engagement. You need to really listen and hear from us on what our needs are, especially from youth and low-income people of color that make up a large part of Daly City and also the culture here in Daly City. I urge that for the next budget process and for all future budget processes, we have intentional listening sessions and while in advance of budget meetings. The city council and staff can then take those needs and integrate them when they are setting their own priorities, as well as the budget for the following year before permanent allocations are made. I also urge the city to act on equitably distributing funds and allocating resources. That means giving more resources to those in need and less or none to those that don't need it. For example, we're in a pandemic, people are still losing their jobs, getting evicted or falling behind on rent and accumulating debt. So much more resources are needed to go supporting those families, as well as adding capacity to the organizations that have been doing the work. Another example is more funding for the library and recreational opportunities for youth and the larger community. The police department does not need more funding. They already have the largest budget. And lastly, for Measure Q funds, which is a regressive tax and impacts low-income people in Daly City the most, therefore, most of the funding of NAA needs to be allocated and centered around the needs of low-income people in Daly City now and until the measure is active. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Lastly, we have Jay Jansen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jay. I was born here in Daly City, and John Daly Library is just a 10-minute walk away from me. I have a background in early childhood education and special education, and I was a former preschool teacher. I appreciate the efforts to start funding library and recreation programs, or rather, to add more funding. The library was, has only just recently opened again since the pandemic. How much of our neighbors have missed out on resources to survive and thrive during a pandemic? So many have been displaced without having the ability to look up resources or finding folks to contact and help advocate for them. It wasn't just, I think maybe in March, that our allies at Faith in Action were able to support folks in Westlake apartments. So how many of our neighbors have been pushed out? Or missing contact with loved ones that they don't immediately live nearby? About 2,000 families and households here in Daly City are without a computer at home. And about 3,000 of those homes are without the internet. People who come to the library consistently are the ones who need computers. So often, I hear council mention that there is a digital divide, or that seniors are in the dark, as mentioned by Councilmember D. Giovanni. That, we are, we have the power to change that. This should enlighten us all to remember that libraries are not just books. They are a resource hub. As mentioned, I have a background in early childhood education. Families go there to read with their children. There's internet, and you have librarians that support you. If we prioritize providing access to technology and teaching youth and seniors how to confidently use computers and laptops, imagine how we can empower our community members if we were able to support them to even come to these meetings.
Ms. Jansen? Your time has expired.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we have one hand raised after last-called speaker, if you would like to allow?
Sure, I'll allow them to speak.
Okay. And last, we have Nadia Bick.
Oh. Thank you. That's odd, I'm a panelist. Thank you so much for giving me the time. So I am reaching out about the current budget. And when I hear about what's been proposed, one of the issues that I have is that I continue to hear, as being a community organizer in 2020, organizing in Samhain County, a lot of the things that came up when we were door-knocking and phone-banking that we continue to, that Faith in Action continues to do to this day. We keep hearing that affordable housing and preventing displacement of Daly City residents is the most important issue currently facing our city. Yet, I don't see that being a priority in the budget. So I think that is definitely something that needs to be looked at and focused on. Again, I know that the mayor has heard from the Westlake apartment tenants, but there's also other people that don't have the ability to organize, that may have other language barriers, and we need to make sure to address this, because we do not want any more people displaced, especially during a pandemic. I also echo many of what the community members have said regarding increasing library and recreation services. I'm happy we're restoring some of the hours. I'm happy we're restoring some of the programs. But we really need to look at prioritizing these services over the police, because 41% of the budget is too much, and giving them more money for cameras from Measure Q.
Ms. Bick, we can't hear you.
And that money in their 41% of the Daly City budget, they don't need anymore. And secondly, I think it would be, third, it would be ideal to expand to have citywide Wi-Fi. I really would, I think that everyone would benefit from that. And again, because the libraries are not open this week. Sorry, I just want to make sure that everybody hears this. Wi-Fi is important, and it needs to be accessible. We need to close that digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
This concludes our public comment on this item. I see no other hands raised at this time. At this time, and so public comment on this item is, particular item number nine, is now closed. If there are no other questions for staff, I know we went through a lot of questions during the presentation. I'm asking my colleagues, okay? Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Mayor. I think just listening from a public comment and public comments that came, that were written, I think it's, I would like to introduce, in the next budget cycle, a listening session. I do agree that we should have a little bit more community transparency and a little bit more community feedback during our retreats. Also, when we're talking about Measure Q, I believe Measure Q really talks about public health emergencies. And when we talk about public health, racism is one, is identified as a public health issue. And when we talk about restorative justice practices, where it's rooted in Indigenous practices, where we can get, even if they're from different cities, you know, there's the thing called the prison industrial complex, where there's so many people that are Black, Indigenous, people of color that are entering this multi-million, billion-dollar industry. And the system is set up to make. to make profits out of imprisoning people. So I think restorative justice is a practice that addresses racism, addresses this larger phenomenon of the prison industrial complex, which is making multi-millions in for-profit prisons and stuffing people into a, you know, a system that is very, very oppressive. So when we talk about these things, I think it's, we have to look at it at a drone level instead of looking at it at a very close level. And that, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Dr. Ross Dasmagwal on your comments. You know, I'm in agreement, I think in the next budget cycle, you know, if it's a listening session or, or, you know, in the near future, you know, we did do something this year and I wanted to let the public know that we did provide a town hall. It was like similar to a listening session in regards to measure Q. But I do agree that maybe there's a possibility of a listening session in the future for the next budget cycle. Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, to thank the community for your comments tonight. I gleaned a lot of information. And actually, a few things were said that I'm going to reserve right now for comment later on, especially when the time is appropriate. And they were good comments, some good ones. And I'll start off by saying I'm proud as a council that we have decided to do a lot for the libraries. I've heard comments tonight and I really feel good about it. And I think we came together to do such. I wanted to bring out that at this council retreat, I don't remember everything, but I do remember something. And it started off where it was said, "You can't restore everything. You're going to have to pick and choose and figure out what is more important to you." But with that being said, we had some discussions and we are doing best that we can. I know, and I realize the term, "you get what you pay for." And I also firmly believe it is better to have and not need than the need and not have. However, I do owe a fiduciary responsibility to this community in the city of Daly City. I will not support an expenditure to which I don't have any information about. I can't do that. That's my fiduciary responsibility. In regards to the prison population, yes, I've seen the movie to which how folks are profiting based upon the labor that is received from prison population. But I also say to myself, "How did folks get in prison in the first place?" And I'm sure this will be a topic for discussion as we talk more about restorative justice, the types of crimes. And to get to prison, it's to be a serious felony. And is felony crime something that we are going to take on in this city? So just a few things to think about. And I would ask all the council members, look into the facts and not, and not with a single-focused lens straight ahead, but basically an overall lens. Let's see, did I have any more notes here? And that's, that's all I have at this time. Thank you very much. I would, at this particular time, I would ask, before you obtain a vote, any affirmative from me, that the pencils are sharpened to see and where we are spending the community's money. Thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I see Councilmembers Buenaventura's hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address some of Councilmember Sylvester's concerns because I think they're valid. And and these kind of decisions, they're not easy and they do take some risk. And but, you know, change and progress is never easy. And I'm not asking you to believe in a plan that's not yet been fully developed. Of course, I'm not asking for that. Because the details of which have to be very carefully crafted and that will suit the needs of Daly City as a community. And so I can make all these, you know, great promises and, and, you know, expectations, and they might not be true. And that's the problem with, with, you know, sort of elaborating on a plan that's not yet been fully baked. But I will say, some of the things that you did bring up, Councilmember Sylvester, are the very things we are considering when we develop this plan. For example, you mentioned the idea of felony offenders. I can tell you that is a discussion that I think we've resolved, which is, this, again, this is a pilot program that's in its initial stages. So our natural inclination is to start small and not deal with the felony violent kind of offenders. The initial discussions that we've had focused almost exclusively on the low-level misdemeanor kinds of cases that include things like petty theft, vandalism, maybe trespass, shoplifting, that kind of thing. Now, this, again, I'm emphasizing, this is an initial pilot project. But the idea is essentially if we develop a restorative justice program, then maybe, just maybe, we can change people's lives and we can correct the path that they may have started down in the wrong way. And so it's, it's, it's something that we're going to get input from the community, from you, from, we're going to have study sessions on it. Because we're going to have to decide a lot of things, including how do we screen the cases that we decide are deserving of a restorative justice program? Who will be the decision-makers as to what kind of punishment or rehabilitation will be bestowed upon the perpetrator? How much input will the victim have in this process? And again, I know that there was some concern about confidentiality. Well, the victim doesn't have to participate in this program. It's a program that is completely voluntary where really all, both sides have to agree to enter this program. And then we'll measure the success of our results from whether or not they complete the program, whether or not there's some recidivism, whether or not it's effective, whether or not the victim feels satisfaction, whether or not the community wants to continue with the program. So the numbers that were thrown out, we have to throw out a number. Now, it could look much different. If we fail miserably, then there, you will not see an allocation again. But if we have a successful program that is the marvel of the county, then we could see justifiably funding this even more. So I would just urge you, Councilmember Sylvester, that if there is a chance to take, it's this one. Because this can all be all about doing good for people and justice. And it doesn't, it's not going to be a detriment. If anything, it's a more positive step to social justice reform. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. I saw Councilmember Sylvester's hand up.
Okay.
And then LB, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Buenaventura. You know, at various times through my tenure as a council member, we have debated on many issues. And I appreciate your candidness. And I think it's, what's very important is, and I've learned through my lifetime, is to put yourself in the other person's shoes. And I'm going to say, you do that very, very well, and I'm very, very appreciative. I had no idea, and that was the issue, was the clarification. And you said it was a work in progress, but I didn't, I didn't have any idea as to, you got to crawl before you walk. I am in full support of that. I believe in not, this is not change, but another resource that may do good in our city. What I'm concerned is about the bits and pieces that I've heard, especially when we talk about the prison population, that has nothing to do with this. What has to do with this are infractions and misdemeanors. It has to be a felony before you get to prison. And in order to get to prison, probably have some sort of recidivism to which you have clearly spoke about. And it's a work in progress. You know what? I'm starting to move toward approving and supporting this. But then the other side that I have concern about is the money. I mean, I'd be willing to sharpen the pencil and let's start off, after all, this is a budget. And basically, as Mr. Nevin said, I got it here in bold letters, it's authority to spend. I don't think, and as we move, that we're going to spend anywhere from the initial, from $500,000 to $1 million. But if you provide a figure or have staff provide a figure that is reasonable and provide some sort of clarification as to why this at a minimum, I want to hear it. And, you know, so thank you so much for your statement. Thank you so much for some of the clarification because I know it has to be ironed out. But I'm glad, I'm glad you provided what you did thus far. Thank you very much, Councilmember Buenaventura.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I do appreciate Councilmember Buenaventura, at least with Councilmember Sylvester, was able to answer and get some information, and I do believe that people restored justice. However, I do not believe in matches or measure Q funds, nor, and the fact that it came up after the vote of measure Q, that's an issue. Because I do not believe the voters, if they knew about it, maybe things would be different as we sit here. But because they were not privy to any of these details or whether we even need it or study on if it was a part of it or any other thing given prior to, instead of after it's approved, is a reason that I cannot support. And the details matter and the transparency matters to the people about the money, $500,000. When you hear people that need, we need more programs for our youth, perhaps even like midnight basketball for the youth who have nothing, which that's preventative, right? Giving them more programs and expansion for our youth, especially after COVID, the mental health things, little hangouts, maybe little cafes where they can go, be together in a safe environment, those kind of things. So we as a city, although, like you said, it may be something new, and I know that you have experience at a county level, based in Seracclary County, and which I commend for the youth that you did were a part of. I don't know as a city, as we sit today financially or otherwise, because it came after the effect of measure Q is the reason. Had you come forth before and explained everything, given us a trust factor amongst your colleagues to be receptive and open-minded, as you may not think that probably that we wouldn't be or I wouldn't be, being open-minded and caring about another individual that perhaps fell on bad times, came from families that didn't care about them, got into a little bit of trouble and didn't do anything, you know, needed help, there are those individuals. And I do know because I've talked to a lot of the probation officers that we have in our county and how they deal with the youth and how they do care and the county level and, and, which I thought that that's what they provided. Then maybe things would be different, but this transparency was not given to the voters, unfortunately, for the measure Q funds. And the transparency is a big thing. And I have a fiduciary responsibility that can't allocate that kind of money to this at this time. But I do appreciate the fact that you did. You have a record. And I commend that you're on a California commission and have done work pro bono to help individuals. So I do commend that part. But again, the people that have reached out to me were very upset about it being done and not knowing anything about it. And here we are tonight and it's done after measure Q was approved. It's under measure Q money. And that's, that's an issue. So thank you very much, Mayor. And I appreciate everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni for your comments. If there's no other comments at this point, I'm checking to see if there's any hands raised. Well, you know, I'll say my, my final comments in regards to the budget. I think, you know, I said it earlier, to see a 24% increase towards our Department of Library and Recreation is, is really showing where our values lie in regards to serving our youth and our seniors, right? We've heard from some members of the public. We've also heard from staff in which they, they want to see these programs come back. And, you know, because it serves our very community. When there's accessibility to resources in regards to having even a place to study, having the resources to use computers, having the, you know, ability to, you know, get books. And it's not only for young people, it's also for, you know, all ages, right? And to me, you know, this is showing a reflection of our values and where we, you know, where we want to put our dollars, right? And so to, you know, this is something, I don't think, you know, from the timeframe of me being council, have I seen kind of this percentage allocation back to our libraries and recreation. And we know that's where our youth participate. We know that's where our seniors participate. And so this is something I'm glad to see. Also, I think what I'm also glad to see is that there are programs in which the response to mental health crisis is on the table. And that's something that's in our communities, right? Given what was said earlier around the pandemic, there's been a lot of stress factors, a lot of things that have happened in our community, from the pandemic to job loss. I mean, really high stressors. And so to have more mental health clinicians in our communities towards emergency response down the pipeline, I know we have a pilot project. It's crucial, you know? And we're looking at ways to be innovative and to have a response in which there are expertise in the mental health field. So, you know, it's, I think, if anything, like, when we hear pilot program, you know, there is a certain amount of allocation for now. It's not the full amount, but there's a potential, right? And so the research will be done in that regard. We talked about the increase in senior programs, right? Because it is a trusted program for our older adults. You know, we didn't say, well, what is the program that's going to be in that $500,000, right? Because we value our older adult population today. You know, we didn't say, well, what is that going to go to? There is an increase, but we didn't, you know? So because you value the older adult population, I hope we also value a way to look at programs that push beyond and see, you know, social justice aspect of things in our society. And so I think, you know, it's very hopeful that we are in this place, because we could have been in a different place as far as the deficits in our city. I mean, that is something so important for us to look at as well. We could have been in a larger deficit. And thankfully, we have federal dollars coming down the pipeline. And yes, we have addressed some of the needs in our community when we have allocated CDBG funds, when we have given dollars to the Daily City Community Service Center. And that was, you know, that was like when we heard the need. So we have responded as a city to the needs of the community. And it wasn't down the pipeline, it's when we responded because of the pandemic. And that's something I want to say, like, we did together as a city. We are continuing to do that, right? Daily City Community Service Center, which is a vital asset in our community, you know, providing more funding to them, so they have more case managers and being able to speak to the Chinese community, speak to the Latino community, have another mental health professional. I mean, you know, we are responding and listening, and that's what we're doing. And so I just wanted to reiterate that not only in this budget, but in, as we had to respond to the pandemic, we put our dollars to where it was needed the most. And so, you know, this is a one-year annual budget. We usually go through two years, right? But because of where we're at, you know, I think that when staff recommended one year, that was, you know, very keen to do so, so that we are able to analyze, okay, where are we at with our sales tax, with everything, given the fact that we're moving into a direction where we're opening? So hopefully, you know, our retail goes back, you know? And hopefully, you know, all of these pieces where there was a deficit, we'll be able to ensure we have more revenue. And so I want to thank the staff for the work on the budget and for this very fruitful dialogue with my colleagues, right? Because, you know, this is our budget for next year. But, you know, I'm excited to see on July 1st that Engine 95 will be up and running, right? And that is something that has been, we've been long awaiting, and along with the community. And that's something that we're going to be able to see come to fruition as well. And so in this budget allocation and this budget year, there's a lot of things that, a lot of hard work has been put through. And I think that we will also reassess after this year. And we also have downed the pipeline an opportunity to work with community on responding on a comprehensive plan around recovery. And that's something, you know, in the summer, we'll be able to work with staff, with our community members, you know, where are those needs? And there's continued need, as mentioned, right? There is, is it in rent relief? Is it towards small business support? And so the conversations around those relief money for the community is still down the pipeline. And that we're going to have a forum to be able, a study session, to be able to talk about this, and really build a plan to respond to community needs. So in this regard, I mean, I, you know, I make a, I don't see another hands up. I make a motion to approve this budget allocation for this upcoming fiscal year. And that's where I'm at. So I moved to approve the budget.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Buena Ventura. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Again, only because of the Measure Q of that line item, that's almost a million dollars, $500,000 to $1,000,000. Sadly, you have to vote against that, because it's not what the people voted for.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, no.
Ms. Manalo.
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. It passes with three and two noes. And now we are moving on to public appearances and oral communications. But before I start with public appearances and oral communications, I do have a statement to share with the public in case you haven't seen our release. I wanted to share with all of you that this is an update that the City Council has asked the California Attorney General's Office to conduct an independent investigation into April 7th, 2021, the officer-involved shooting of Roger Allen. The city is also engaging to hire an outside independent expert to lead the administrative investigation that includes reviewing the officer's actions with police policies, procedures, and tactics. We would like to inform the public of these important steps. Thank you very much. And now with public appearances and oral communications, as far as general public comments, I will now hand it over to Ms. Liloni Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It's important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance with the Council's rules of decorum will be muted. I see one hand raised. Last call for general public comment. Okay, we have three speakers. No, we actually have, we have, okay, three speakers, and the last being Marguerite Machen. The first speaker I'm calling is Fernando Montanez.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. First and foremost, I want to thank the following councilmembers, Buena Ventura, Vice Mayor Daos Magdual, and Mayor Manalo for siding with the community with our grievances and with our demands to finally invest in welfare and social programs into actually supporting the community's demands in mental health and restorative justice. And I want to reciprocate the language that Glenn Sylvester spoke of this evening and say, I am also uncomfortable with your language and with your comments about the school-to-prison pipeline. Because let me tell you right now, this is about that issue. The fact that, back in my high school days in Westmore, I have seen a lot of Daily City Police Department's presence in my campus, more than actual professional, mental health professionals that are actually more effective in addressing my campus's needs with mental health and other social issues. And with the youth's demand, the youth's demand in restoring reform in our police department, I want to say, I want to point out how tone deaf and out of touch Glenn Sylvester is with his language this evening. The community is very clear with where we stand, and it is evident with our actions and our mobilization when Roger Allen was murdered by your beloved police department. So I highly support any reform and investment in social programs and wellness programs and resources, because that is the answer to our mental health crisis. And to also mention that Measure Q does not address the issues of restorative justice, mental health is beyond COVID-19. Mental health is a running issue result. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jay Jansen.
Oh, hi. Speaking again, thank you for having me on the call. Very mixed emotions after the update by Mayor Manalo about possibly having the Attorney General looking into Roger Allen's case. This has been like a very confusing, tumultuous time in Daily City. People are grieving and also very scared to be outside with all this heavy policing. And there's also like more shootings happening where I live in Broadmoor. So, and I also don't feel safe calling on police. So what is there to do? And at the same time, being able to have friendships with local organizers and people with nonprofits. And I uplift the work of my friend, sister Amanda of Vibes and Smiles, and creating kits and showing that community really shows up for people. I know that she had just received an award and showing up for our Asian elders and seniors. And, you know, of course, those kits are given to folks of other ethnicities. But it just makes me think of Roger Allen's sister, like, being harassed by police. I can't give her pepper spray. I can't give her a whistle for her to feel safe if she's being targeted. I mean, that was a while ago, but I just hope and pray for some type of relief and peace for her with this news coming forth. And I was passing out kits in Bay Shore. And Councilmember Di Giovanni was like, hey, oh, take this. Take some safety kits for you, but this doesn't happen in Daily City. Take it for when you go to Chinatown. I, the microaggressions and the layer of racism that just happened before me as I'm volunteering to pass out these kits, it's just.
Ms. Jansen.
It's just so much. Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Marguerite Machen.
Hi again. So first apologies, Madam Mayor. It's my first time being on a Zoom meeting with you all. I've come in person before, and I spoke out of turn, not under general public. So my apologies for speaking under a different topic. It's been a long evening. So I continue to listen to the meeting. I'm glad I did. I just wanted to share now, as a homeowner, a community member, very actively involved, 17 years with the Daily City Youth Health Center, two years now as a substitute for the Jefferson Union High School District, also being a biracial woman, identifying as a black woman, a mixed woman, a black Italian woman, everything you could imagine in that spectrum. I have worked and seen just the disparity. I have a nonprofit that works in the jails and prisons. And I have a cousin who was killed in the custody of a police car. It is on the Black Lives Matter billboard. And I just want to share that I am thankful. I listen to everyone's point of view. I'm trying to be as open-minded as I can, but I am thankful. I am going to trust the process. I'm thankful that this did pass. And I'm going to trust it. You know, I understand two of the councilmembers' concerns. And however, we need to trust the process. This range will be figured out, and I have seen the disparity. It's very, I'm one of the few subs that go to Thornton. I'm presenting two awards tomorrow at Thornton Graduation, the Kindness and Cooperation Award to my aunt who passed away, who I inherited my home from. And there is a large disparity, and my concern has focused on black men primarily with my nonprofit. Why? Because that's where I have seen the most need. And it's heartbreaking. And like I said, I go into San Francisco, San Bruno County jails. I work heavily with San Francisco. This has also been brought up as a member of the African-American Community Initiative in Samatelle County. And I've also brought these issues up before. So I'm thankful, and I would like us all to just, I trust the process. So I would also agree with that. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we have one hand raised after our last called speaker.
Yes, I'll allow it.
Thank you. Christine Fuller.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I have to say, I'm a lifelong resident of Daily City. I had been a Commissioner of the county for about 12 years. I have never seen my city be so divided. There's no gray area anymore. There's no discussion. I actually was working the evening of a council meeting where I saw numerous attacks on our city manager. You know, everyone has the right to freedom of speech. But it should be done with tact, respect. These are arduous times. I get it. But it's very disheartening to me, because I love everybody equally, okay? And I am also multiracial. And I am also multiracial. And I grew up with Marguerite. She knows. We know each other very well in very different times. You know, Rod, you know a little bit about me now. Ray, you know probably the most about me. But I'm calling for respect from our public, just all in general. Let's have an open dialogue discussion rather than attacking one another. I think there will be more formulative resolutions that may, you know, procure forward. And, you know, I just, I just want everyone to get along, whether we agree or disagree. We all have to respect one another. And attacking Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, it's really just, it's not warranted. So I, I really hope that you guys hear me out, and let's just have a really honest and open, friendly dialogue. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I think that is the end of public comments. I see no other hands raised at this time. So given there's no more public comment, I want to thank every single person who spoke during public comment today. We're now moving on to appointments to boards and commissions or membership committee appointments. Do any of my colleagues have any appointments? Any board of commissions at this time? Seeing no hands raised, moving on to reports. Any council committee meetings from May 9th to May 23rd?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. I already spoke about this, but on the Social Justice Committee, we met on, I think, May 10th. And pretty much what I've said in the meeting is what we've discussed, which are things like, you know, what, what kind of crimes we're hoping to capture, which, which did not include any felonies and included mostly lower-level misdemeanors and the crimes that I mentioned, including vandalism, shoplifting, things like that. We also have a bit, a lot more research to do, actually, because there are some laws, some charters, some regulations regarding how we can set up this program. We have been in talks with, with different departments, including our city attorney's office, how that's going to be managed, the role that maybe the, the city manager's office will have, the role of the police, and, and what the decision-makers will look like and what kind of various rehabilitation or punitive measures will look like. So again, these are all very early discussions. Nothing concrete has been made. I'm sure we're going to meet soon again after staff has done more homework and more research. And at some point, we're going to have, I believe, a study session where the community will be involved and invited to give their input into how this program of Daly City will look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray Benaventura, for your update. Looking to see if there's any other council committee reports from my colleagues. I see no hands raised at this time. I do want to report that on May 20th, I had the Basca meeting and wanted to update on some key points. Wanted to share with everyone, I know, around water supply. While SFPUC's system is in tolerable shape compared to others in the state, the SFPUC is asking for the wise use of water by its retail and wholesale customers and their water customers. SFPUC has asked water users in its service area to voluntarily reduce their water use. The SFPUC's goal is to maintain water use levels, particularly during summer months, such as overall use, and does not exceed the scene levels in 2019. As far as water supply and demand, the director reported that Basca's service area's total potable water use in February 2021 is sixteen percent less than in pre-drought in February 2013. She also noted that increase in water use during the months of December, January, and February, when it would otherwise be wet, is an indicator of dry conditions. Basca will continue to monitor the trend with SFPUC as the water year continues. Basca's next board meeting will be held on July 15, 2021. Thank you. Now moving on to item number 11, city council. Any city council reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Please.
Yeah, I just want to make it really short, because, um, before, because I wasn't using the hand. So when I did my vote, I just wanted to specifically talk to my colleagues and say, as you know, the only reason how I voted was because of the Measure Q. But I do look forward to hearing more about it. And, and we can revisit when I have more of the description and the details, and looking forward if it wasn't under Measure Q. So to let you know, I am open-minded, and it's really sad that it was under Measure Q. So I just want to let you know that as we move forward, you know, I have an open mind, but it's too bad it was under Measure Q. Because that, that, that's not what the voters knew about. They didn't even know about it. That's all I want to say. I want to repeat it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments for my colleagues on city council? Seeing no hands raised, I want to share that on May 12th, I joined the Housing Our People Effectively Interagency Council Regarding Housing and Homelessness. I also continue to join the bi-weekly COVID-19 SMC elected official briefings and continue to sit on the Vaccine Communications and Equity Working Group consistently to ensure access, ensure access to vaccines in our community. Last week, I joined the Communities United Rally that happened all over the nation. And Councilmember Benaventura and Vice Mayor Daws Magdual also joined. It was, it happened in San Mateo Central Park and was joined by many other cities in the county, really uniting together against hate and anti-Asian violence and really working across diverse communities. And this not only happened in San Mateo County, it happened in Oakland and Fremont and the Bay Area, and also nationwide. I also want to say thank you to the community partners that I worked with recently to host an event fundraiser in regards to a program called St. Sentinels. I worked with the Filipino-Bayan滩 Resource Center, Cultivate Labs, Smiles, Vibes and Smiles, and also it was, it's really a fundraiser to ensure that we create community patrols and the, community patrol in the community, and then also provide self-defense classes for community members out there. It happened at Gilart Park, and I want to say thank you to all of the, the staff that was there, Park and Rec, and also engineering that supported it. But it was really a response to the anti-Asian violence and really bringing the communities together in positivity. And that is, and I want to also thank Councilmember Benaventura and Vice Mayor Daws Magdual for joining yesterday. And also want to say thank you to Supervisor David Canapa, who also stopped by, but was really towards positivity and ensuring that our elders, you know, get access to resources and also the community at large. We had demonstrations by Escapo de An, Filipino martial arts studio, and many others that just provided cultural dances and really to uplift everyone with a continuity of Asian-American attacks that we see. So thank you again. I want to say thank you to all the staff that supported the event. At this point, I will ask staff, Ms. Maltby, do you have any reports for this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not really. I just wanted to thank council, all, all five of you, for the thoughtful discussion tonight. I've been with Daly City for over sixteen years, and this is the first time we've had, like, really, I think, fruitful discussions, and I appreciated everybody's voice. And, you know, we're not always going to agree, but you did it cordially and professionally, and we have a lot of work still to do. I think there's a lot of work to be done on a lot of the programs that we were talking about tonight. And I just, I, I would hope that we would continue as you always do to work as a team. And I, I'm convinced that you will.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maltby. I think that, you know, there's, as you said, there, there's not going to always be an agreement on things, but it was a respectful discussion and, and within my colleagues and really questions that arose that were important. I mean, this is our budget, right? And so I think that you're right. It was very cordial and respectful. And then, and I think moving forward, it will continue to do so. I'm very hopeful with that, because we all care about our city. We care about Daly City very much. And appreciate all your hard work as well, Ms. Maltby. So at this point, I will now move on to adjournment. I will adjourn in the memory of Alexandra Haralambidis, Bidis, Haralambidis, DCPD Sergeant Michael Haralambidis's mother. If there are no other adjourned memories, I, I see Vice Mayor Daws Magdual.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to adjourn in, for two individuals that passed away about a week ago in a tragic accident. One of Daly City, actually, they were both Daly City residents. One is Renault Vienna. And I'm just going to read directly from their GoFundMe page. So Renault Vienna, or known to many as Reno, was a loving son, brother, partner, uncle, and a great friend. He was remembered as an outgoing person who got along with everyone and was quick to pick up conversations. He was very driven and eager to learn whatever he put his mind to. He just turned twenty-five on March 31st, 2021, and had many plans to experience more adventures with family and friends. Although he was taken from us too soon by doing what he loved the most, being in the water, he lived his life to the fullest and made the best out of every situation. And the next one is very, very near, and dear to my heart. And it was a former student of mine that passed away alongside Renault or Reno. And his name is Benedict Rosario, AKA Benny, who was my, my student last year in fall of 2019 in my Philippine history class at Skyline College. And I'm just going to read a few words. So three words to describe Benny. Charismatic, confident, and cool. My first impression of Benny when he walked in my class, he had so much swagger. He was so cool and so confident, and he used to walk with a whole entourage of all of his friends. And I remember the first day he walked in, he had that, that, that cool guy mentality where he sat in a desk, and he slouched, and he had this look on his face where he looked at me with this, this look, like, "What are you going to teach me?" And being an educator for, wow, over the past couple of decades, I had that question in my head, like, "Are you going to take this class seriously? Just because you're Filipino doesn't mean that you know everything about Filipino history." But he proved me wrong. He showed me that he had so much compassion, connection, and energy. I look forward to what he had to say. He brought life to all my classes, his smile, his jokes, his vibe. If you opened up to him, he would show you love back. And also, I want to share this from his GoFundMe page as well. Benny, or Benedict Rosario, was the most loving, caring, hardworking, funny, selfless, kind-hearted, and supportive son, brother, cousin, friend, uncle, and grandson. He made sure everyone around him is always happy and safe. He wasn't selfish and always wanted to make sure to put everyone first. He was also close to God and made sure he shared his faith to everyone. He had many plans for his future. He was an adventurous person, willing to try everything. Unfortunately, led him to his tragedy. Rest in peace, Reno, and rest in peace, Benny. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see Councilmember Benaventura's hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, last council meeting, I, we had adjourned in, in memory of a friend of mine. Her name was Cindy Mamoradlo Gumpal. I just wanted to let the community know as a reminder that her viewing is this Thursday, May 27th, from four to nine PM at Cypress Lawn in Colma. And then her actual funeral is on Friday, May 28th, at 1:30 PM at St. Augustine Church in South San Francisco. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Benaventura, and, and those that we honored this evening. Maybe I'll have a moment of silence before we adjourn. Thank you very much. Well, and have a good rest of your evening.